Okay, normally I would open the meeting at this point. We're going to give it about another minute for our clerk to arrive. She is on her way and she should be coming in very shortly. I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order from May 13th, 2025. This meeting can be viewed live on Northern Berkshire Community Television Station, Channel 1303, and will be posted to their website as soon as possible. Due to technical issues, we will not be doing YouTube streaming tonight. If we can get it going before the end of the meeting, we will put it on. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer?
Here.
Bona?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Pitch?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
Oleskiewicz?
Here.
Shade?
Present.
Wilkinson is absent. Sapienza?
Here.
Eight present.
We have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silent remembrance. I have several names tonight, and I'll go through them quickly. We have Margaret Marge Richidello, worked in the city clerk's office. Robert Richard Sun worked for the city of North Adams. John Lou was a member of the North Adams Planning Commission and also the owner of Mohawk Motors, which the Lou lot is named after. And he was involved in several civic activities and had won several awards, including the mayor's award for civic activity. And lastly, we have Carol Cantoni, teacher with the North Adams Public Schools. And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the March 20? Okay, can I get a motion to postpone the minutes for the March 25, 2025 council, city? City council meeting minutes. Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing of visitors on the agenda. Hearing of visitors on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Virginia Reel. I live at 36 Holden Street. And when to talk about the capital outlay plan, I think that council member Bona's suggestion to have the discussion of the capital outlay plan at a time when it can be given better attention is a good one. And so I hope the council will seriously consider it. I do have like some questions that I hope might be answered in the discussion, like, does the capital outlay plan require council approval, just like other aspects? I just didn't know. The 2025 budget had what is called a capital needs assessment. Is this the capital outlay plan or is that a different document? And I concur with having the planning board review that, capital outlay plan. And I was hoping maybe council member Bona could also speak to a sample timeline for that review of the capital outlay plan. It doesn't have to be exact, just a sense of how you see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else open forum?
Yes, Michael Malazo, Clarksville, Massachusetts. I would like the councilors to seriously consider getting a second opinion on whether you need the council, the city council approval for appointments or not. I don't believe it's okay P law is giving you good advice. Certainly not at the airport commission level. I believe it was 1982 that the council put those, put that into, as an ordinance, that you had, that all appointments had to come before you guys, and there was a reason for it then. And I would suggest it's even more important now to stop consolidating power to this administration. I think they need oversight. I think it's important for the taxpayers of the city. So please don't vote to just do away with that language until you're 100% sure of what the legal ramifications are of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jen Barbo, Church Street, North Adams. I am here tonight to talk about the capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan is one of the most important responsibilities of local government officials. It coordinates community planning, financial capacity, and physical development. These are not my words. These are the words of the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. This is part of a 13-page document that can answer your questions of exactly what the plan should look like and how it should be approved. I'd also like to share with you, the capital improvement plan identifies what the total picture of our needs are. The reality is, we have some tough projects ahead of us. This also is something that is asked with many grants. Do you have a capital improvement plan? We can now say, yes, we do. Here it is. These are not my words. These are the words of our administrator, Jennifer Maxi, from the 6/11/2024 budget meeting, when the capital improvement question was asked by councillor Shade. Draft capital improvement plan states that there is some conflicting wording in the ordinance, but we're looking at it. However, I promise that this will be presented to the planning board in July or August, as they are working diligently to get through the process. She's speaking of the "they" being Catherine Ead and our former Dave from accounting. These again are not my words. I asked a question, and this was the answer I was given when I sat at that side of the table by our mayor on 6/13/2023. In the first 100 days of my administration, I will present a capital improvement plan programmed to address the short and long-term infrastructure needs of this community. Again, these are not my words. These are the words that remain today on this administration's site when she ran for office four years ago. It has yet to be provided. This council cannot continue to not have this document produced. We're not out of time. I still have time.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Just for a point of clarification. Do you want me to go on this side?
You're not supposed to deliberate.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't deliberate during this time. Okay, anybody else on open forum? Okay, moving on. Without objection, I-
Councillor Green? Could we entertain a motion to move the police officer swearing in?
I'm just about to do that.
Oh, good.
Okay, continuing. Without objection, I am going to move up paper number 12,492. This is a communication 106 from Mayor Maxi requesting time for the swearing in of police officers Samuel Demolino, Jasmine Knapp, and Christopher Voss. Mayor?
Thank you for getting my title correct. So, good evening, everyone. I would now like to invite Chief Bailey, Lieutenant Beverly, officers Demolino, Knapp, and Voss to please step forward to the council floor. Just be careful with the courts. This evening, I have the distinct honor of introducing three exceptional individuals who are about to take their oath as full-time police officers with the North Adams Police Department. These officers proudly graduated from the Police Academy in Holyoke just this past Friday, a tremendous accomplishment that marks the beginning of their service to our great community. Let me take a moment to share a few words about our new officers. Officer Sam Demolino. A native of Adams, Officer Demolino is a graduate of McCant Tech, class of 2017, and he earned a bachelor's degree in business administration and sports management from MCLA in 2021. He began his career in finance at JP Morgan Bank in Westfield while living in Holyoke, but he was drawn back to the Berkshires and recently returned to North Adams with a strong desire to serve the public through law enforcement. Officer Demolino hopes to put his computer skills that he gained at McCann to use in helping protect vulnerable individuals by targeting online predators. His commitment to public service also continues a family legacy. Sam's grandfather proudly served in the Adams Police Department. Next, Officer Jasmine Knapp. Officer Knapp also hails from Adams and is a 2016 graduate from Housick Valley High School. She earned an associate's degree in criminal justice from Berkshire Community College and brings with her a background in compassionate care and serving, having worked at No Paws Left Behind, Berkshire Medical Center, and as the owner of her own dog-walking business. Officer Knapp has long felt a calling to make a deeper impact on her community. Her love for animals inspires her dream of one day serving as a canine officer. Officer Christopher Voss. Officer Voss brings a unique, diverse background to the department. He grew up in Lexington, Massachusetts, graduating from Lexington High in 2007 and later earned an undergraduate degree in 2011. He then pursued a master's degree in vocal performance and opera. Prior to entering law enforcement, Officer Voss was a familiar voice behind the afternoon drive time from Boston. During the pandemic, he relocated to North Adams and worked in construction with the Very Good Company. He now lives in the city with his fiancee and her two children. Officer Voss brings with us a strong sense of empathy and people skills, which led him to pursue a career in policing. He has a particular interest in community engagement and looks forward to serving on a bike patrol. Notably, Officer Voss was a standout at the academy, which made me very proud, where he was the class president and was honored with the prestigious Academy Directors' Leadership Award. Congratulations. Congratulations to all of you. Officers Demolino, Knapp, and Voss, as you stand before us tonight, ready to take your oath, I urge you to embrace this responsibility with integrity and purpose. Never compromise your character or the trust placed in you by this community. Have the courage to hold yourselves and others accountable and always strive to uphold the highest ethical standards. Let your service be a reflection on the values of this administration and the people of North Adams who you now serve. As mayor of the city of North Adams, it is my privilege to welcome you and extend my heartfelt congratulations. We are very proud to have you here. Quickly and agile, I respectfully ask you to administer the oath. I will bear true faith and allegiance-
I will bear true faith and allegiance-
To the commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will obey the lawful orders-
That I will obey the lawful orders.
Of all my superior officers.
Of all my superior officers.
And that I will faithfully and impartially-
And that I will faithfully and impartially-
Discharge and perform-
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a police officer for the city of North Adams.
As a police officer for the city of North Adams.
According to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding-
And my understanding.
Agreeably to the rules-
Agreeably to the rules.
And regulations-
And regulations.
Of the Constitution-
Of the Constitution.
And to the laws of the Commonwealth.
And to the laws of Commonwealth.
And to the United States of America.
And to the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to- Anybody that would like to leave that was here for the inauguration of these officers may leave. If you wish to stay and watch the workings of city government, you may as well, you might want to do that as well. Thank you.
Councillor Sapienza, could I also suggest that we move council papers 12,493 up?
There we are.
Okay, just-
Already got that.
Okay. I just, I just assume not paying any more time than we have to. No offense, Matt.
Okay. Okay, I call us back to order. Council paper number 12,493. Council paper number 12,493. In order to revise all borrowing orders to include specific provisions to allow the city to issue qualified bonds through the Commonwealth.
Point of order? The first one's a mayor's communication?
Yes. Okay. Okay. Let me just read it off the agenda. Sorry, my papers are out of sync here. Okay, communication number 107 from Mayor Maxi presenting an order revising all borrowing orders to ensure the inclusion of specific provisions allowing the city to issue qualified bonds through the Commonwealth. Mayor?
Great, thank you, Councillor President Sapienza. It's come to my attention that we are required to have an additional comment in the order that would allow us to submit an application to the state's municipal finance oversight board. It's my understanding that years ago, the council did a similar vote. So Matt Fair from KP Law, who is our bond counsel, is available tonight to answer any questions, but this is described to me as a standard housekeeping matter to ensure that we can position ourselves to qualify for any and all applicable options under the state program, as well as any other entities that would go under the review of the municipal finance oversight board, which is a standard practice when we issue long-term debt. Also included in this is we need this wording to help us get organized for our next big issuance of debt, as well as our next bond rating. So that's it. In a summary, it's somewhat of a standard language that just needs to be added and then published, approved, and then published as generally prescribed by the council. And Matt is there today. Hi, Matt. Wait one second, Matt. We can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
Yep, we're going to need some volume. If that's possible.
Sure. If you want us to start, and then we can get Matt.
Yep, I will read the, read the order. Council paper number 12,493. In order to revise all borrowing orders to include specific provisions to allow the city to issue qualified bonds through the Commonwealth. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt. Is it an order? Yeah, move to adopt.
Move to adopt.
Second.
And we have a second. Okay.
Can I?
Discussion, go ahead, mayor.
It also has to be published?
Okay, yep.
Move to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law?
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion as, we have an amended motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor on the amendment?
Aye.
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 Okay. Councillor Shade?
Yes. With this new language, is the treasurer currently the one that's putting in these applications for us? And is there any kind of special training that needs to be done to do this job?
The applica-, the ordinances are put through by the treasurer and then vetted by bond counsel. This is language that specifically tees us up to go before the financial, the municipal board. Traditionally, we've done a lot of bands, and we haven't gone to market in a very long time. But with the HRR money, the school project, and any other borrowings that were done prior to my time that are ready to go to long-term debt, this is needed to be done. Matt, did you want to comment on that as well?
Sure, thank you, mayor, through the chair, to the members. I will only add that this is standard language that we usually do include in loan orders as requested by the city. And in this case, there was at least one or a few loan orders that did not include the necessary language required by Chapter 44A of the general laws, particularly in Section 2, that would authorize the treasurer to submit to the municipal finance oversight board an application to qualify the city's bonds for that particular purpose authorized already by the council under Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8 as applicable. And this would simply, as the mayor alluded to, housekeep those items so that the treasurer's enabled with your approval as the council, which is required by the statute I cited to, to submit such application. By the state auditor. And also includes a representative treasurer, state treasurer's office, also includes a representative attorney general's office, and it also includes the representative Bureau of Accounts, Division of Local Services, DOR. Bill Arigol, who, by the way, is retiring soon sadly because he's been such an instrumental person there, but is well replaced by his colleagues also shadowing him for quite some time. So it really is a process that the city's used repeatedly. I've been bond counsel now for 15 or 20 years at this point. I can't remember anymore. I've lost track of time. And we have issued repeatedly state-qualified geo-municipal purpose loan bonds, repeatedly using that program. And the nice thing about the program, and I think it's somewhat unique in all 50 jurisdictions in the state, in the country, is that essentially it provides the, if you're approved and you pledge, it's pledge of local aid to secure debt service repayment, it does provide you with the state's bond rating. And that's very important because that's obviously going to, in this case, provide you with a interest savings, which will be somewhat significant, I believe. And David Eisenfeld, the city's municipal advisor, could probably provide greater flavor for that. But essentially, you enjoy the state's bond rate. And so that's going to save on debt service interest payments because your coupon's going to be that much less because you will have enhanced credit.
Okay, Councillor Green?
Yeah. Through the president, to the mayor, do we have any things that are being held up right now that could benefit us?
Nothing is being held up. We're not ready to go to market until the fall. So nothing is being held up. We will bring everything that we have to bring to mature debt, which we'll talk more in depth during budget discussions. But nothing is being held up.
So there's nothing in there that if we did this, we could get a better rate of some?
No, because we haven't, we haven't, we're not borrowing yet. This is in preparation.
Looking forward, okay.
We have to go before the MFOB. I believe it's going to be in September. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councillor Black?
Excuse me, if I, if I may, mayor, through the council president. You know, just to also further clarify that this, this paper before the council is to supplement prior votes. So again, you as the council have already, by two-thirds vote, approved the prior debt subject to this supplement. So the debt has been issued and authorized, or I'm sorry, strike that. Authorized but not issued necessarily, to your point, and to the last speaker. And, and this would essentially only provide that the treasurer may submit the application. Doesn't require them to do it. But it does grant the treasurer the ability under state law to seek approval by the MFOB to qualify that underlying debt accordingly.
Okay, Councillor Blackmer?
Through the chair to Attorney Fair. Should we be adding this language every time we're borrowing?
Going forward.
Councillor Blackmer, thank you. Because it wasn't requi-, requested necessarily, hasn't been. This simply kind of Band-Aids that, if you will, to supplement all prior loan orders of the city council to appropriately add that required language. And there are a couple of occasions where that hasn't occurred for whatever reason. And so this, and it's something we did some time ago too, because even before our time as bond counsel, there were ordinances, or I'm sorry, strike that, loan orders that were passed that didn't include that necessary language. That's a long time ago, and we did a cleanup then. This is essentially doing the same thing with respect to a very few number of orders. But yes, to your, to your questioning, councillor, we do ordinarily include this.
Basically, we have bands or bond anticipation notes out there for different projects. We're going to lump them all together, and then we're going to go out for the bond.
Correct.
And that's why we want to make sure we clean this up and have the right language.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Shade?
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, attorney.
Thank you. Through the chair to the mayor or to the attorney, whoever can answer. Which specific previously voted on orders are we amending to include this language? Which projects?
So we're amending at least the Greylock School Amendment that was, or loan order that was passed.
And HRR.
And I believe there was one other minor borrowing. I forget which one it was offhand that we're also amending.
The fight.
But this was, again, standard language that we usually do include in all loan orders that appear before your vote dishonorable body for approval.
The school vote, the HRR vote, and the third one escapes me. I think the third one was done before my time. I could get you that answer, Ashley.
Please.
Specifically those two.
Thank you.
Okay, any other councillors? Okay, we have a motion and a second. And I'm going to call this a roll call vote. You don't need to be?
No.
Okay, all right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
This one's about to publish?
As amended.
It'll be published, yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Matt. Have a great night.
Yes, thank you all. Have a terrific night. Great to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, going back to old business. Council paper number 11,646-D. An ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the city of North Adams. Chapter Z, Section 10 dot 12, entitled License Marijuana Establishments. Refer to the planning board for joint meeting with return date of May 13th, 2025.
Move to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law, as recommended by the planning board, with the accepted items and the denotion that they do not want the, they do not want to delete the outdoor grow.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as amended. And move to amend.
There's language in the one that's presented for the number of establishments. It's listed as 20 in the paperwork that is provided, but in the, the general government's final recommendation was not 20, it was four, I believe. So that language should be edited. So move to amend to recommend four licenses, not 20.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Okay. And do we have any discussion on the?
Yes.
Okay, we need a motion to-
Point of order?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Shade?
Thank you. This is something that's been out there for a while that the general government took a look at several different times. Zoning outdoor grow so that we can ensure that it's not in the downtowns, but still allowable in places where it's not in a neighborhood. And I think that's the proper way of doing this, rather than putting a blanket ban. So I think this is great to pass now and then review that in the future about how that might affect neighborhoods.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Motion to?
You have a motion.
We have a motion with the amendment?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, three. Three, yes, and two opposed.
Three?
Did somebody abstain or?
No. One, two, three.
I didn't see, I didn't see.
Five.
Let's retake the vote.
Who was the ayes?
Yea?
Okay, one, two.
Six.
Three, four, five, six, okay. And opposed? Two, okay. Motion passes. Counsel Paper Number 12,393-2. An ordinance to amend revised ordinances of the City of North Adams under Chapter 13, Sections 26, 49, and 50, postponed to the meeting of May 13, 2025. I'm going to update the council. We have not had a public safety meeting on this. We expect to have one next Tuesday. And we will have an update for that. Can I get a motion?
A motion to postpone to May 27.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone to the meeting of May 27 and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counsel Paper Number 12,469. An ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of North Adams. Chapter 2, Article 28, Sections 103, 107, establishing the Animal Control Commission. Postponed to the meeting of May 13, 2025. Same update as before. The public safety has not met on this. Can I get a motion?
A motion to postpone to May 27.
A motion to postpone to May 27 and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counsel Paper Number 12,470. An ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of North Adams. Chapter 2, Article 22, Section 124, regarding submission of the capital improvement plan, postponed to the meeting of May 13, 2025.
Move to table and to move to table this one as we move on to the substitute language that's been presented.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Any discussion?
I'll second the motion and discussion.
Because we've got a whole other one written, so.
Okay.
We don't need to deal with this one if we don't want to.
Okay. Counsel Shade?
Yeah, just point of clarification. Is this, is the new language still under the same heading, the same section? Same paper number?
Section 22. One is Section 123 and one is Section 124.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Wait, this one's 124. Okay, then what do we want to do with it?
Okay, we have a motion to table this.
Well, I don't want to screw up the other one, but I don't want them to be competing with each other is basically what I'm trying to get at.
Okay. Do you want to rescind your motion or do you want to keep your motion?
I rescind my motion.
Okay, we have a motion to rescind the motion. Can we get a new motion, please?
So that's the one we discussed in general.
Yes.
Yeah. Tell me the motions.
I move to adopt the language as recommended by general government? And publish as required by law?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the language and publish as required by law. Any discussion? Counselor Bona?
Yeah, so you will see the general government meeting minutes in front of you, and I'm going to combine that with the general government, the, what was referred. And the only thing, while we did have some discussion on it, the only thing that the general government did want to amend was, I just had it close my page, was changing the word "may" to "shall" and, hold on, just lost my page. So the line that says "such program may be referred under general laws," Chapter 41, we want to change that to "such programs shall be referred." So in other words, we don't want it to have the option that the mayor may or may not want it to go to the planning board. It currently is "shall," so we want to keep it "shall." All the other changes that were requested, the general government committee were fine with.
Okay, Counsel Blackmore?
From an operational point of view, the Auditor, Treasurer, Board of Assessors, I understand treasurer's responsible for cash flow, the auditor knows whether our books are right. The Board of Assessors can tell us what money we may or may not have is based on value. But as far as the actual plan and what things are needed, the Director of Public Services, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, they need to give their input as to what is needed. I mean, I'm glad that the Finance Committee's included in that. But the Library, everybody else, it, I mean, I guess, I guess I don't know why, what the point of the language was, other than including the City Council, the City Council Finance Committee. Mayor?
Counsel Bona?
We can refer that. I mean, the request came from the mayor.
Yeah, so we were trying to align the capital improvement document with where it should go, in the right place. As former Counselor Barbo has pointed out, it does say Planning Board. I have regularly submitted my capital improvement plan through the budget process, and we haven't gone in-depth to that because it's through the budget process. All of the departments are consulted with that as part of the budget process. So every year we go through, what have we ticked off? What do we need to add? What grant funding have we secured? What haven't we secured? Where do we think we can realign it? So the capital improvement plan is somewhat of a fluid document, but it is submitted regularly. It's submitted every, in the last three years that I've been here, through the budget process. So the point of that was to kind of get it out of the planning board and before people. When we get to projects that affect the planning board, of course, we would submit it to the planning board. But as far as in preparation for the document, Counsel Blackmore, all the departments are engaged in that, whether it be Public Services, Public Safety, all the way to the Council on Aging. We regularly go back to all the departments every year and evaluate what we've done, what we haven't done, and what's on the radar for the future. So it was really just to get it off, the wording off to go to the planning board. And I think in Counselor Bona's second document, he has a solution for that, which I agree with.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're in compliance with the state law. Because I realize that in the past, the planning board hasn't seen this document. And that's not on you, except for the last three years. It's not on you for the last thirty or forty or fifty years. But this came up at the planning board meeting last night. Obviously, the planning board wants not just a presentation, they want active discussion. I mean, they want input. And it's not a matter of just, here's the plan. And, you know, I think there was a discussion of the fact that it's, technically, the CIP or the COP, whatever you want to call it, is a planning document.
Exactly.
So the planning board, with their expertise and some of their background, and by state law, and actually, our ordinance accepts that state law.
But the ordinance, the reference in the ordinance is incorrect. So that's what we were trying, that's what we were trying to change. That's what we were trying to realign that.
It goes from A to C.
That's what we were trying to change.
Okay.
But, yes, it is a planning document, but it's more of a financial planning document. And a lot of those projects will be vetted through the planning process as it comes. Certainly open to have that discussion with the Chair about that more, but our thing was just trying to fix the ordinance to begin with and to create a better process, which I think Counselor Bona has put forth in that second document that's upcoming.
Okay, so does this change right here, Chapter 2 Administration, Section 14 Planning Board, the Planning Board here establishes in pursuant of general law, Chapter 41, Section 81A to 81C?
C, yes.
Okay.
Correct.
2-124, this doesn't say Section 2-124. This says Section 2-80, according to what I printed off the city website.
Counsel Shade?
Yeah, just to clarify, the section that was, that is currently in our ordinances online that is approved is wrong. So this new Section 81C is the correct section it's supposed to point to. The new language also removes any gendered references to the mayor as well, so just wanted to point that out.
Counsel Blackmore?
And I appreciate that, but this references Section 2-124. But the establishment's composition, I mean, my attitude, if we're cleaning up language, let's clean up the language so that Section 2-80, establishment composition term of office, the planning board therefore establishes in pursuance of general laws, Chapter 41, Section 81A. Should we not also be changing this to Section 81C is my question?
I don't have my computer to pull it up, but I have a printed copy.
I can say that that did not come up at general government and no one brought it up at that time at that meeting, so we want to refer it back, but, you know, we met and we met with what was in front of us.
Okay.
But this is also the kind of stuff that would be nice. I thought that's the kind of stuff that would be checked by the company we're paying to do all this ordinance work.
And that process is in progress, by the way. The codification is in process.
And again, it's down here under powers and duties. It's mentioned several times under the planning board. That's all. I'm just saying, if we're going to. If. Whatever, take it and move on to that one. We can approve this and look at the language going forward.
Okay, Counsel Bona?
Yep. So initially, we could have held off on this, but I think one of the reasons during the meeting that Counsel Shade felt like we should move this forward as is, is one, because of that 81C, that that is incorrect, that is currently incorrect in our ordinances. So that would be important to at least have that referring to the correct reference. The gender, making it gender neutral, obviously, that could wait. That's not as urgent. But currently, the ordinance that has, with that, did say, that now has 81C is a correction. And I think that's why, I know Counsel Shade, if remember, you mentioned like this is why we should at least get this part going corrected.
Okay, Counsel Shade?
Yeah, and if there's other things we can correct, we can prove those forward too without just the other pieces of it were not included originally. So I still think we should move forward with this so we can get this corrected before the budget season continues, and then we can work on the other ones as well.
Okay, so your motion stands as?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel Paper Number 12,476. An ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams. Chapter 2, Articles 26, Human Services Commission. 29, North Adams Commission on Disabilities. 31, or 33, North Adams Youth Commission. 36, North Adams IDEA Commission. 20, or 30, 34, North Adams Public Arts Commission. Chapter 26, Mobile Home Park Rent Control Board. And Chapter 28, Massachusetts Museum of Contemporary Art Cultural Development Commission. Section 28-2, Appointment Terms and Vacancy, postponed to the meeting of May 13, 2025. And do we have an update on that?
Do we need a motion or you want an update?
Uh, let's get a motion first.
Make a motion to approve and pass to a second reading, publish and pass to a second reading.
Second.
Okay, a motion to publish, pass to a second reading. Any discussion?
Yes.
Counsel Bona?
Now, I will read the general government. I will skim the minutes I gave you. I gave you three pages here of the minutes from the meeting. This was probably the more contentious part of the meeting because, and really, all we are doing on a number of ordinances when they're dealing with certain boards and commissions is removing consent of the council. So this is where we have received a letter. I also gave the counselors four pages. You'll see them marked A, B, C, and D. And that's going to refer to some things after the meeting. I did some further research because there was members, audience at the council, that meeting, the general government says, hey, look at this. So I went and I looked at it. So first, I skimmed the meeting, and initially Counsel Shade, you know, felt that it was not a good idea to remove the council's consent. It's in our ordinance, it's been in our ordinances for a while. It's been accepted by past counselors' mayor, therefore, it, you know, it has a purpose for oversight. Counsel Wilkinson, you know, he felt this was maybe more of a power grab for the administration and wanted to take control of things. Bona, myself, I didn't feel strong one way or another because, you know, in the years that I've served, I can't recall any times where the mayors have brought in appointments where it has turned into a huge debate and that we have denied any. So I didn't see it as something where, you know, it wasn't going to change a whole lot no matter which way it went. Then we had some guests, and Ms. Harpen, her comments were, it's a counselor's job to listen to community and we should be part of the process. The council should be part of the process. She, though, also said she didn't recall any time that the council has disputed a mayor's request, but recall sometimes we did have some discussion. Ms. Barbo, she, you know, talked about looking at the charter about appointees, and she also specifically said to look at MGL 8J, 48J. She continued to state that she used the Commission of Disabilities as an example as it was only formed by and through the City Council. The Commission on Disabilities reports to the council, and we appoint them. It would be unreasonable for us to take the council's name off those appointees. Mr. Marazo said he felt it was important for the council to approve or disapprove all board members. Again, you can see in the minutes who was obviously more said, but these are sort of the gist of those. Ms. Reel said, you know, felt it was a waste of time that we were spending on things like this and to just move on to things that, you know, have more value to the city. Ms. Barbo did question, you know, how is the mayor currently making appointments without the council's consent since we actually haven't changed that ordinance yet? And let's see, Counsel Wilkinson said, you know, we have a hard time getting people to serve on boards, and actually, by coming through the council, this is one way of showing some thanks and recognition. And then at the end, Shade made, Counsel Shade made the motion that not to accept the request. And we all agreed at that time. Based off that meeting, I went back and have done some further research. So one was Ms. Barbo said to look at 8J. Or 8J. So on Page B, you have 8J. And I highlighted three lines. The first line does say, "The city, which accepts the provisions of this section by vote of the City Council, subject to the provision of its charter." So based on our charter, and also, it does say, "The City Council agreed to this," and that's what made 8J part of our, part of our, what we go by. However, if you look downward at the star, again, this is MGL. "Subcommission shall consist of not less than five and not more than thirteen members. In cities, the members shall be appointed by the mayor, subject to the provisions of our city charter." And at the end, it says. And at the end, it says the city council must approve gifts to, if the commission of disabilities gets that. Those are the three things where councils are mentioned in eight J. Well, actually two. One is the mayor makes the appointments. All right, so then I went further and our North Adams charter says that upon the adoption of Plan A, all heads of departments and members of municipal boards, except for the school committees, officials appointed by the government assessors, if elected by vote of people as their terms of office expire, shall be appointed by the mayor without confirmation of the city council. So our charter says no council. Our ordinance, though, the ones in front of us where we're being asked to remove the consent, do say consent to the council. So what does that mean? We do have a letter and it's on the back that we did receive from our solicitor, basically stating that the charter supersedes our ordinances and the charter supersedes the state. And I'm like, okay, does it? So I researched. And I gave you some examples here. In MMA, it says section twenty, chapter four thirty-eight specifically allows municipal charter to supersede the provisions of state laws relating to municipal charter members, matters. MGL, uh, let's see, Chuck's, then I found this one that was interesting. Forty-three, section four, and I saw, aha, this changes things. Ordinances, resolution, orders, and other regulations of the city or of any authorized body, official therefore existing at the time which such city adopts a plan of the government set forth in this chapter, shall continue and fall forth in effect until repeated, modified, or superseded. So what that's saying is we had some ordinances, we took a new charter in nineteen sixty-five, and if we didn't change those ordinances, then they would still exist if we didn't repeal them. However, most of these ordinances that are in front of us that say consent of the council came in after nineteen sixty-five. So the council made ordinances when the city at the time, the city solicitor at the time approved ordinances. That should not have been approved because one of the things it says in MGL is you, that your local law, your local charter does supersede state law when it comes to charters in the sense of how your government is going to run. Cities have different charters and they get to run them different. The state doesn't say you're strong mayor, we counsel, you know, we get to decide that in our charter. So when our charter was voted, it came in saying the mayor gets to make these authority, you know, these, these decisions. Everything I found at this point pointed to saying our charter supersedes the state law when it comes to our late, local government structure. And it obviously supersedes our ordinances. So that being said, by removing consent of the council, all that's doing is cleaning it up so that our ordinances is not in, or is not, so it is consistent with our charter. You know, like it or not, we can change ordinances. We can't like that change the charter. So we have two conflicting things, which obviously creates confusion when it comes to the public and what we should be doing. Now, Mr. Marazo did request, which could be done, is should this question go to, and I, and we did bring this up. It was actually sort of a referral at the time. Should we bring this up and have the attorney general give us an opinion? At that time, it seemed okay. From what I'm finding here, I feel now it would be a waste of time. But the council can discuss that if they want because everything I'm pointing to, state, charter, local, it says our charter supersedes. I will leave it at that and I'm sure Counselor Shade probably would.
Counselor Shade, go ahead.
Thank you. Yep. First, I want to thank Counselor Bona for bringing this new information forward. It's not what we had at our general government committee meeting. And at that meeting, I was very much against making these changes. One provision that Counselor Bona brought here but did not read, which is important for the public to understand, is MGL, chapter forty-three, city charters, section fifty-two. Specifically says upon the adoption of Plan A, which is what North Adams has, all heads of departments and members of municipal boards, except the school committee, officials appointed by the governor and assessors, if elected by the vote of the people, as their terms of office expire, shall be appointed by the mayor without confirmation by the city council. And that's an MGL, not even just in our charter. It's also an MGL. So as much as I would like to push back and keep the approval of city counselors as part of this, both our charter and MGL provisions are telling us we can't do that. We would have to change the charter to do that. So with that information, I will vote in favor of Counselor Bona's motion.
Okay, Counselor Fitch?
What would the repercussions be if we denied these changes? Are we going to be locked up?
Counsel Blackmer?
My guess is the mayor will consent, continue to bring them forward, telling us who she's appointed. It doesn't, we have no legal recourse, is my assumption.
And that is my plan, as I have been since we had this decision.
Counselor Shade?
Also, by not changing these, we would technically be in conflict, our ordinances would be in conflict with the charter and MGL, based on those two provisions. And if we're trying to get our ordinances to align with MGL and our charter, we should clean up the language.
Counselor Bona?
This would also probably come up when during the, what's the technical name?
The codification program, yeah, process, yeah.
So they would be coming to us anyway, saying you have these things that are in conflict with MGL. And why spend the money to tell us to correct things and then say we don't want to correct them because we don't agree with them?
Okay, anybody else, Counselor Fitch?
Yeah, I did want to thank you two especially, counselors, for doing all this research and bringing this here. I too have been feeling just so poorly about this. So thank you for bringing that information. That really helps with this decision.
Counselor Shade and then Counselor Bona?
Yeah, and I, I just want to go on record again. I still disagree with the idea that we shouldn't have the appointments. But whether I disagree or not, MGL with this new information about MGL, we do have to follow MGL and our charter and it's, it's the proper thing to do. So Mayor Maxi, thank you for bringing this forward. I was incorrect in my information, I will admit that. I would still like to see our charter eventually changed and these kinds of things, you know, fixed. But at least for now, we should adopt these so we can both be in compliance with our charter and with MGL.
Counsel Bona?
Counsel Breen hasn't spoke yet.
Okay, Counsel Breen?
Yeah, I have a question. We have the total of thirty-one boards and commissions and these only represent five. What, what's the status of the other fifteen?
Counsel Bona?
Yeah, well, some already have just the mayor's authority. So these are ones that it's in the ordinance that specifically says we were to give consent. But a lot of the boards and commissions weren't, we weren't on them anyway as giving consent.
So the others don't have?
I believe, you know, what came forward was again to clean up the ordinances of the ones that had it.
So it's just these five?
Through the chair, mayor, he's at the right?
Yeah, those are the ones that we found thus far. Counsel Breen, the others, I was bringing forward just for information only way back when. So I think that's where some of the confusion was confirmation versus point of information. So we were only requesting to change the ones that said with consent of city council.
I still have two more questions. Of these five, where we have some commissions and we have some boards that are appointed by other people, like the governor, or are any of these, are these all mayor or is there other people that?
There are some boards that we have that require a government appointee per MGL or the charter or ordinance. But those are the ones that were relevant to approval by the council.
Okay, so, so.
Like off the top of my head, I, I don't think any of those have governors' appointees off the top of my head.
So if there is a, would that be against our charter?
No, that, that, no, that's an appointee of either the MGL or the ordinance. There's, it's specified somewhere. I don't know off the top of my head.
Point of clarification? I can answer that question. If you look under MGL, chapter forty-three, city charter, section fifty-two, the section that I read, it specifically says in there, except the school committee, officials appointed by the governor and assessors if elected by the vote. So the, any governor's appointments are included in the language already.
Okay, and is there some that come from the council also?
No.
Yes, there's two.
Counsel Blackmer?
Well, that was what I was going to ask. That was one, I mean, I'm not thrilled with this. I, I'd always thought we should be voting on them. But you've done your homework and I appreciate it. I know how tedious this kind of work is. But the council president specifically appoints somebody to the IDEA commission and to the traffic commission.
Yes.
So where does that fall in there?
Okay, Counselor Shade?
Yes. My understanding is that the way the ordinances are written, there's, there's nothing in MGL that would remove the power of, like, the council's direct appointments or the chair's direct appointments. So those would still exist as is. It just wouldn't require council members' approval for appointments from the mayor, essentially what this is saying.
Okay. All right, Counsel Breen?
Yeah, I have one more question. That we, we moved the, the old business two weeks out. There's a commission involved in that. Is this something that's going to be added to every time a commissioner or board is subject to be approved? How, how does that work? Like the animal commission is not established yet. So what does that say for one that's not established?
All right, let me answer that. In the Animal Control Commission, the new ordinance is being proposed, the language will be in there that the mayor appoints. If I remember correctly, in the new, the proposed chapter twenty-eight, which is the Animal Control Commission, that language will be in the new, the formation of the new commission. So when we discuss that, you'll see that in that chapter twenty-eight proposal.
So, so I guess my question is, so from now on, all boards and commission, new ones plus these five will have the mayor only. All the others will stay the way they are?
That is correct. Okay. Counsel Bona?
Yeah, I mean, that's sort of what I was just saying. We're, we're moving the words that conflict with our charter. So the charter says the mayor points. In reality, you probably don't even have to say the mayor points because that's what the charter says anyway. But it would probably still be in there, the mayor, you know, appoints the members. There may be some additional, we could probably set rules of what some of those members may be. And that's why we did have to change the ordinance for the airport commission to change how, what some of the board members needed for qualifications. But the appointment still at the end came from the mayor or would come from the mayor. But we could say, like, when we make ordinances for some of these commissions, it says it must include a counselor. It must include, you know, the youth commission, so many youth, so many adults, people, whatever. You know, so we can sort of guideline what some of these commissions are supposed to have, but only some. But at the end, it's still the appointment will come from the mayor.
And I believe that the youth commission does have that language.
It does, that's why I use that.
Counsel Fitch?
I, I recognize the laws that are in front of us and, you know, I'm rational enough to absorb that. But I think the reason that this feels so icky to me is that, you know, we have two branches of government for a reason, you know, as a check on the other branch of government. And I know we have a strong mayor system, but I believe that a council should serve as a check on the, on the administration's power. And it seems that we do not have that and that is fine. But I was going to request that perhaps instead of the current system that we have, we go back to the old system and we still have even if a ceremonial vote, a vote on these new appointees. I don't see any reason that we couldn't still do that. I feel that that might give us at least a feeling of transparency and like celebration of these people and our participation in it. So I wanted to propose that as an option as well.
Thank you. Counselor Bona?
Yep. So at the moment, the mayor is at least putting him on the agenda. That's not even required. All that's required is that she has to fill out a form and it would be filed at the city clerk's.
Right.
So, so in a sense, we're getting a little more, but we don't even have to know. You know, it would be public, it'd be public information because it would be a paper, you know, a certificate of an appointee. But all that has to do is go to the city clerk's office. It actually does not have to be put on the agenda. So by be putting on the agenda at that time, they're still being announced, in a sense, you could say ceremonial. Maybe it could be a little bit more, you know, if they could want to come and say, hey, here they are in the audience. But, but beyond that, it is what it is here, so.
All right, I'll get to you in just a second, Counsel Shade and Counsel Breen. To answer your question, maybe a possibility, and I'm just throwing this out there not to, something that we necessarily have to do, but maybe have the new newly appointed commission members come in and be publicly sworn in. That might be just something to throw out there. So I'm just throwing that idea out there. And let's see, Counselor Shade, I think you had your hand up first.
Yeah, along the lines with what Counselor Fitch is suggesting, I would love to see a return of their names actually listed on the agenda rather than just the communication, but actually say the names of the people that are being appointed and where they're being appointed to, just to make it public. You know, just so it's there in the agenda document.
Exactly, I, I agree with you. That would be between Counselor President Sapienza and the city clerk. I do list them in my communication.
Okay, so that would be my suggestion so that their names are more publicly available than just the communication document.
And I would have no issue, you know.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Counsel Breen?
Yeah, along that lines, we have three different things. It says approval, confirmation, confirmed, and consent. Those are all different meanings. You, you can confirm something, doesn't mean you're voting on it. You just, like a hotel reservation, yes, I confirm I have it. Consent is a different thing and approval is a different thing. If we had some language, if we wanted to go before the city council, presented to the city council some way. We're, we're removing all the terms with the city council. We, we should decide what we're looking for because they're not all votes.
Counsel Blackmer?
I think it's basically we're changing the language. Each one was written differently. They were all written at different times by different people. I mean, the Dis, Commission on Disabilities goes back a while. The Human Services Commission again goes back a while. The Youth Commission is relatively new. That's been in the last ten, fifteen years. Same thing with the DEI and the same thing with the, um, what's that one? I can't even read it anymore. Section, Public Arts Commission, oh, Mobile Home Rent Control. We're just changing, we're deleting the language regardless of what it is. And I think, and those were all written at different times by different people. And yeah, if, I guess if we were going to make everything, if we were keeping it in, it would make sense to maybe make the language consistent. But since we're deleting it, I wouldn't worry about it.
Counsel Bona?
I'd like to move the question.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to move. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion approves. Motion passes.
No, we moved the question, now we have to vote on it.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Can you please repeat the language that, or the motion on the table? It's been a while.
The motion?
Was to approve and publish, pass to the second reading.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Seven, seven, yeah, okay, seven and one. Counsel paper number twelve thousand four eighty, Communication, Counselor Fitch, requesting time to discuss water safety and quality in the city of North Adams, referred to the administration with a return date of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. We really don't have a motion. Do we have an update?
Yeah, certainly, yes. I actually spoke with the mayor earlier today. What we did, I think it was a couple of months ago, was I brought in just a quick presentation or a quick line of questioning. I've heard from a lot of our residents that they're concerned about our water quality. Want to hear more about our practices, want to hear more about the challenges that we face and what we're going to do to meet those challenges. And so I requested that we have a presentation from the administration about the state of our water. The mayor has agreed to do that in July or August, I believe, but is going to get through the budgetary process first. And so that is the only update that I have. And so I guess what I And so that is the only update that I have. And so I guess what I would do is to, to move this to the second meeting in July, which I believe is July 17th, but I'll confirm that right now.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to the second meeting in July?
It's not the 17th. One second.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-second, thank you.
Okay, so the second meeting in July, which is July 22nd. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Counsel Paper number 12,487, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Appendix D, Section D-6, Police Department Fees and Fines for Parking Permits and Passes, passed to a second reading, and this was not published by the law. At the time, it was felt that the motion did not pass. Further research stated that we had a majority of the members present, voting members present, approve this, so.
One abstained, and the person who abstained does not count.
Okay, so the one abstention does not count towards the final vote.
We.
Just point of clarification, the original vote was to pass, or was to publish as required by law, which only requires a majority of members present, correct?
And that was, that's what happened, yes.
Okay, so.
List off to Bona.
We had four, okay, and there were eight, eight people. The amount we were gonna need was five. But because one person abstained, that went down to seven, so the amount needed was four. So, and that was found out after talking to some other clerks.
Counselor Bona?
Wait, we had a majority vote in favor, we just didn't have the six we would need if we had, we're making, changing the ordinance.
So we didn't have.
Two-thirds.
We didn't have nine people here.
You don't need it for the.
We.
Right.
We had eight people.
Yep.
And four voted back then for it to be published. One person abstained, three were nays. So with that.
Three were nays and one abstained?
One abstained, four voted.
Could you reiterate?
I would have to go back. However, but because, and I think Counselor Alesskowitz was the abstain, because Counselor Alesskowitz abstained, we only have seven people that were to be counted for the vote, which means the four votes pass.
Okay, okay.
So I, what I had to do because of the abstain is I talked to clerks and then I talked to the state, and it's like you can not count the abstain because that's like the person's not there.
Okay, that wasn't my understanding, but okay. So basically, it wasn't published. We're gonna publish.
It was not published, needs to be published.
It's going to be published.
So we're continuing this to the next meeting?
Yes.
Is that what you need for a motion?
Yes, let's have that.
Could we move this to the second meeting? I make a motion to continue this to the second meeting in May.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have one question.
Okay, who had their hand up first?
I think Pete did.
Okay, Counsel Alesskowitz?
Just for clarification for whatever counselors wasn't here, the reason for my abstention was, I am a resident of Main Street and I do use the municipal parking lot, so I abstained from the vote.
Counsel Breen.
I have a question. Do we also have an ordinance where we talk about, we lease these parking lots out on certain dates?
No, point of order, that's not this.
No, that's not, that's not part of this discussion.
We do, but that's not this.
That's not part of this. This is for regular resident.
Well, I understand, but we have dates, like, it, it's covering the year in here.
Certain times of the year are one rate, that's for the St. Anthony Lot, certain times of the year are one rate, and then other parts of the year are a second rate. That was what, was in the original schedule.
Right, and I guess, I guess my question is.
Yeah.
St. Anthony's, we, we close it off on certain dates.
We close it off on certain dates. However, okay, and this is, again, this is going a little bit beyond the discussion. It's closed off on certain dates, but there are provisions, if I'm correct, Mayor, you can correct me on this, I believe there are provisions made so the residents can still park in their spots.
So they can do both?
Yes.
Okay, that's my.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have, oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Bona?
Again, I don't think all counselors were here. One of the reasons I opposed it at that time was mainly due to the Center Street parking lot, that we would be doing a fee increase to those with permits, but most of the parking lot is free. So it's only those that are paying permits that would end up getting an increase because there are no meters or any other way we are charging in that parking lot. So it just didn't seem very fair, and it was sort of a, also my way of protesting of, we need to come up with a plan to also start doing some of these mobile app parkings that would allow better ways of, easier ways of collecting from people using the parking meters. Not the sole way, but other ways.
Okay, Counsel Shade?
Yes, I also voted against this, and I still will because the fees for a three-day pass, which is supposed to also cover just a one-day pass, we don't even offer a one-day pass, so we're gonna triple the charge for you to pa, park for three days and not give you the option to have just a, an overnight parking pass. And I think that's absolutely ridiculous, so I'm still opposing this measure.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed?
Abstained.
Two opposed and one abstained.
I need to mark these down.
Okay.
So.
So Counsel Alesskowitz abstained, Counselor Bona and Counselor Shade were nays.
Okay. Okay. Wanted to make sure I hit it right.
Okay. Okay, Counsel Paper number 12,490, Communication from Counselor Bona, presenting a draft ordinance revision regarding Chapter 2, Section 23, entitled Submission by Mayor to Counsel. And Counselor Bona, would you like to read your communication into the record?
Sure, just let me get to that right page, sorry.
And I will file the communication without objection.
All right, I'm not gonna read it word for word. What this basically comes down to is, obviously, we've heard over the years that we are not getting our capital outlay program with our budget, and we should not be approving our budget without it. And I'm suggesting that we allow more time for the capital outlay program for a couple of reasons. One, I looked up MGL, and MGL does not even say we have to have a capital outlay plan. You know, there's suggestions and recommendations, but it is not a requirement that the city has to have one. Ordinance says it must be submitted, or it should be submitted, or must be submitted, when the budget, during the budget time, or with the budget. But it doesn't say that the budget requires it, it just says that the capital outlay program must be submitted with the budget. And so by, there's, so there's nothing that says that we can't approve the budget if we have it or not. It should be there because the ordinance has said it's there, but it does not, it's not going to null and void the budget if we don't get it. And obviously, that's been the case because we have hardly had any capital outlay plans in decades. You know, I spoke with city clerk Abusi, and she says she never remembers one, and she was our city clerk for, what, 27 years? And she, that was four city clerks ago. So that being said, but, should it be, should we have it? Absolutely, we should have it. I'm not opposed, I'm not saying we shouldn't have it. But what I'm saying is, well, during budget time, it gets crazy, and we have lots of meetings, and the administration is trying to pack and do all this budget stuff. We have smaller offices, less staff working on it, and that's, the focus is the budget. By law, the budget has to be done. The capital outlay program doesn't. So that's why a lot of times it gets pushed to the side. The other thing is, okay, now if we're really saying we have to have it, how much attention is the capital outlay program gonna get? Well, let's just do, you know, and I'm not criticizing, say, what we have had, but maybe it can be better if they have a little more time and can focus just on the capital outlay plan. Maybe we can do better by having time set aside just for the capital outlay program. So my ordinance, instead of saying that it should be submitted with the budget, says it can be submitted with the budget or up to six months later. And I, that can be adjusted. I just gave it six months because actually we have very slow periods on our agendas during the holidays, you know, during the end of the year, and I'm thinking like, that might be a good time to look at it and talk about it and review it further. So that's why I gave it six months. Could give it a specific date, that's up to you, but I picked the six months because I figured that time period. But I'm leaving up to administration. I know the question was a timeline, you know, I just feel six months, you know, that's what I picked, so I'll leave it at that. And that's just the communication, so.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, Paper number 12,490, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter 2, Article 22, Capital Outlay Program, Section 123, entitled Submission to Mayor by Counsel. Do we have a motion?
Move to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Counsel Blackmore?
I think this is a good idea for different reasons, and Counsel Bona came up with my idea, my thought is, if you are making a capital improvement plan, a capital objective, whatever the, you're planning on what your infrastructure and high cost items are going to be, it makes more sense to be having those conversations from a budgeting point of view in November and December, so that when you're preparing the budget, hopefully in January through March, April, you then have what you've set aside to do. And also, I usually, we've been pretty good, I know we're gonna have turnover in staff, we've been pretty good about getting our tax rates set or haven't had to meet in the end of December, just to get it set in a long, long time, so we have the time, I think, to look at it. And then also, I hate to move it into January because then every other year, you're gonna have new counselors, maybe, and, and they're gonna be like, oh, I'm trying to learn the job and all, you threw a capital improvement plan at me, what? So I do think that the November, December, six-month timeline works, and I, and I'm trying to think what else goes on in November and December other than setting the tax rate and getting the tax bills out, that's.
Elections.
Oh, there's elections, yeah. That's true. But that's from the beginning, you know, that's the first weekend, the first weekend it's done, and that's only every other year. So I agree with this. Thank you for putting this together.
Hey, Counselor Fitch, did you have your hand up?
I'll hold off, thank you.
You're hold off. Counsel Shade?
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to Counsel Bona for putting this forward. The capital improvement plan is extremely important as we approach finances, and one of the biggest issues that I've been talking to the mayor about every year is money for maintenance and fixing things before they become bigger problems and increasing our budget line items. Having a capital improvement plan is vital to knowing how much we need to spend on maintenance and upkeep of our buildings. I agree that there should be some more leeway in timing of this being presented just because of the focus on the budget and there not being enough time dedicated to actually reviewing all the projects and getting something out. So when we do get something of capital improvement plan, it's usually very minimum and bare bones and really doesn't have a lot behind it because all of the time an effort was dedicated to the budget. So I think affording more time will give us a more comprehensive plan, and I think that's really important. What I would say is, if we were looking at some kind of a deadline, I would put the deadline before we set the tax rate. So that way, the capital improvement plan can be presented before we set the tax rate, so when people see their taxes and their tax rates going up, they know what we're planning to actually build and present to them to, to get things, the, the projects that are gonna come up in the future. I think, I think there's a connection there, and I'd like to see what projects are being worked on before we set those rates.
Counsel Blackmore?
I would say that it's the opposite because you're setting the tax rate based on the budget that you approved in June. So going forward, I think sometimes it gets confusion because how many people have said their taxes went up because we approved the school? We haven't started paying for the school yet, so I think that, I wouldn't do that. I think in November is actually a pretty, November, December is a good time to do it. Because, again, but then we have to clarify. No, this has nothing to do with the capital improvement plan. This is what'll happen hopefully next year. Maybe we'll put money aside for a new fire truck or cruiser, or some infrastructure money to do, to fix the underwater, not underwater, underground water and sewer, things like that. So I guess that's, having been on the tax collecting side where somebody yells about their tax bill, I, I have a little different perspective on that.
My suggestion would be something prior to the end of the calendar year, again, stating the November, December timeframe would be sufficient. Counsel Bona?
I mean, we, yeah, and we can give it a specific date. The, I think, what is the budget date?
Budget date is.
June 30th.
Hundred and seventy days.
So we're basically giving it to the end of the year, you know, so that's why I picked the six month. We could say, you know, December 31st, you know, but again, I just put the six months. I just, just in case the budget dates ever move, which is unlikely, but.
In, in the last several years, we've approved the budget in the beginning of June, so that's helpful. But I kind of do like the date of December 31st because then it's kind of sets it.
I'm fine with that.
But I don't know, whatever, I don't.
Counsel Shade?
If we were gonna set an exact date, I would recommend setting it for the, the first meeting of December so that it's not in, so it doesn't fall during that second meeting where it could fall on a holiday and we don't have it, and then things don't get presented, you know, because we have to cancel it, falls on Christmas or Christmas Eve. So if we're looking at a specific date, I would say by the first meeting in December at the latest because going into the holiday week, people are not gonna be paying attention so much, people are gonna be traveling. It's, it's a disservice to the public to present it right before Christmas when nobody's paying attention.
Right. Counsel Bona and then the mayor.
Well, again, the way it's left open is it gives the administration six months, and I guess they could, but I would doubt the administration would want to be presenting their capital outlay plan during Christmas week, but, and again, and they may come in, you know, in August. I mean, that, you know, unless we want to definitely have it go later, but I'm leaving some flexibility here, so.
Mayor?
I like the six months. I also like the first meeting in December, but just point of clarification, I have been submitting a capital outlay plan in every budget that I've presented to this council during budget prep. I hope to even continue that, even if it's in draft form, so we can get a look at it. But I like the idea of spending some more time on it, and certainly, the first meeting of December, I think, is a great timeline for us. Thank you.
Considering that the capital outlay plan is a dynamic document, that it can change as time goes on, if the mayor were to present something at the time of the budget, it could be modified or amended before the end of the six months. Is that something that's possible?
Again, she, they could talk about it twice if they want, you know, I'm just, you know.
Okay, Counsel Blackmore?
I think this ordinance is about making sure that we get one, and I think that we've, like the mayor has said, we've gotten one. But we're looking, but then we get it, and we don't really have much of a conversation about it, I think, I think she brought up points, I think, Council, we've all brought up points. I think it's great to, to get it at a time where it's not something we're getting just because it's a deliverable that has to be done. We're getting a document that we can actually have some input into, ask questions about, and use. And so then, when the mayor brings a budget on whatever day, preferably April. preferably April, early May, um, we can say, hey, we talked about this much money for fixing something at the library. Where is that in this budget? Or, you know, we can, we can reference that document when we talk about the budget. Is, I don't, I think, I like, I guess, I think six months is great. So if some point we have a different mayor and that person wants to give it to us in, like you said, August or September, then that's fine. I think up to six months works.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Counsel paper number 12,491, Communication 105 for Mayor Maxi announcing appointments to various boards and/or commissions. I will file the communication without objection and turn it over to Mayor Maxi.
Thank you, President Sapienza. So before you tonight is a communication, and I'm pleased to appoint the following people. Reed Solomon Lane to the I. Onto the Historical Commission for a term to expire January 2nd, 2028, and the reappointment of George Canales to the Parks and Rec Committee for a term to expire May 1st, 2028. I thank all of these individuals for coming forward and wanting to join the team as well as to help, um, move North Adams forward and do some great programming. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel paper number 12,494, Communication from President Sapienza requesting time for Nancy Bullock to speak on behalf of the Housick River Revival 5K Run and One Mile Walk. Please step up to the mic.
Thank you, President Sapienza, for having me tonight. Thank you, counselors, for having me. I'm, I'm representing Housick River Revival tonight. I'm here to actually, um, have a little fun. Um, hopefully this will cheer us all up. I'm here to say that we're ha- hosting, um, a 5K race and a one-mile walk on June 21st to benefit the Housick River Revival. I think it's important to understand that the Housick River Revival has been in existence in a long, for a very long time, has done a lot of work. We are embarking on many projects this year. The first project to see this year, uh, will actually be May 31st this year, um, we'll be having River Fest up at the Beaver Mill. Um, and I think it's worth a visit. It's free, 11 to 2 on a Saturday. That said, with these events that we're doing, we need to continue to raise money. And so it was my idea to come up with something fun to do, and I thought, oh, let's do a race. So, um, the other part to this that I'm really excited about is the fact that we are embarking on this out of Courtyard A at Mass MoCA. Mass MoCA has been working with me to develop a course that runs through the museum outside. So you get a chance to see some of the art as well as only one major road that we have to cross, and that's Upper Main Street, right out here. And from there, we go down into Heritage Park, down to the South Branch, which is my favorite place of the river. Um, I do want to give a shout out to a few people, the city of North Adams, for their partnership in all of this. It's been very, um, fun to work with the city to try to plan this event. I want to also thank Mass MoCA. One of the nice things about this race is also the BAMs folks, Berkshire Academy for Advanced Musical Studies. The students will be out playing as the race goes by. Sorry, it's a fire. Um, that would be one song that they'll be playing. And also, they're going to actually write a score for the Housick River Revival. Um, additional feature that, that's going to be added to this is called Confluence of Two. We will be having a silent auction bidding process where walkers for one mile will be able to bid to walk with civic leaders. Mayor Maxi has agreed to be one, Counselor Fitch another, Judy Grinnell. We also have Allison Pebworth, one of our artists at Mass MoCA, as well as Richard Bolger, who is the founder and a musician, but founder of the BAMs program. So I'm very excited. I have information if people want to know more. It's on our website for Housick River Revival. It's on Facebook, Instagram. It's on A Pace of Our Own, which is my walking group. There's a new North Adams Run group. So it's all about coming together. It was my idea to have it be part of Mass MoCA as well, to bring the community to have awareness of the art and the gift that we have in Mass MoCA. So I, um, just want to say thank you for having me. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay, committee reports in minutes. Anything to report? Hearing none. There are no licenses. Open forum, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel. When you've reached the two-minute limit, to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks.
Am I ready to roll?
You're ready to roll.
Great. Um, I want to thank Counseler Bona for providing some meeting minutes to us this evening. Um, I would just like to take a moment to clarify the general government and what was refrained and left out of those meeting minutes. And that would be, um, a rather lengthy discussion that took place regarding a previous appointment of Mr. Kaplinger to the Airport Commission without approval of the committee, of the city council. A solicitor's opinion was sought at that time, and the solicitor decided that in fact the appointment was made inappropriately, that all contracts, discussions, and meetings had to be re-met and reestablished because the contracts were void and null. So I would encourage this committee, as your counsel, you have made a decision tonight to, um, rectify and take your vote away from appointments, that we are again finding ourselves in a position in this city where previous legal advice is no longer current. And mass general law, I understand that Counselor Bona is a very senior member of this commit- committee. However, I don't believe he has legal advice, and that has not been the legal advice prevented previously to this group. In fact, if I remember correctly, and the meeting was recorded, as a, as a community member went ahead and notified you that that would happen. I will get the exact language and be sure that it's made public. Counselor Shade also suggested this matter go before the Attorney General for an opinion, and that was left out of the recommendation to you tonight this evening. Sadly, the meeting minutes were not provided to the community to see so that we could respond to them prior to your vote. But I do want to bring that to your attention tonight because all of the information discussed at that meeting was not presented here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Step up to the mic, name an address for the record, please.
119 Summit Avenue, North Adams, Mass. Our constitution and democracy are hanging by a thread, meaning that our civil rights and personal freedoms are at risk. This is not an opinion, it is a verifiable fact. It is your pledge of allegiance and oath of office to protect and preserve our constitution. Now is the time for us to take a stand to defend it. If not us, then who? If not now, then when? I'm asking once again for you to put on the, put the, on the agenda the proposed resolution for the next council meeting, council meeting, and then to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Malazro. Um, I know, uh, Counselor Bona threw out some random laws that he, he, he feels like he did a good job as an attorney. I'm thinking that he didn't look at Chapter 90, Section 51E, where it's, it specifically states right in mass general law chap, I'll say it again, Chapter 90, Section 51E, that the city council must approve airport commissioners. Your ordinance, your charter does not, excuse me, doesn't, does not supersede that, uh, MGL Chapter 90 law. You're about to embark in taking on more federal grant assurance money? During part of that federal grant assurance is for the life of the 20-year loan that you're taking, or the grant money you're taking, you will stay in compliance with the federal grants that you sign. Without approving the, uh, airport commissioners, you are no longer in compliance of those federal grants for the last 20 years and anything moving forward. Consider that when you guys are making your decisions, that you're out of federal compliance as well as state compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, please step up to the mic, name an address for the record.
Sarah Farmsworth, 244 East Main Street. Um, I just wanted to quickly support Dr. May. Normally, I'm not a fan of, like, resolutions. I feel like, big deal, they don't mean anything. Um, but Reagan, who I would not normally quote, did say our government has no power except that granted it by the people. But as a people, we have watched our institutions hand over their power. So many institutions, so many times, ranging from Congress, the Supreme Court, law firms, um, I can't think of them all, but there's been a lot. And it would mean a lot, I know that we don't expect the presidential administration to come here to North Adams. But it would mean a lot to know that as a city, if anything came our way from anyone at any time, that we wouldn't just hand over our power before it was taken. We would actually put up a fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, please step up to the mic, name an address for the record.
I'm Akilul Point, my address is Versailles Avenue, North Adams. I'm here to let people in the audience, and then the ones that were supposed to be watching, but I guess the internet is still out, that there is a meeting here tomorrow at 4:00 that I think is important for residents to attend. Come learn about the current proposal of the Housick Water Quality District. The proposal is how bio-solid sludge will be processed at their facility. This proposal is approved, if approved, will take on additional sludge from communities that are not in their district. This bio slot, uh, sorry, let me slow down. This bio-solid sludge is contaminated with PFAs or forever chemicals that cause cancer. If allowed, these PFAs will eventually contaminate our rivers, farmland, groundwater, drinking water, soils, and wildlife. Many Williamstown residents are against this and have urged the commission to say no. States like Maine and Connecticut have banned operations like this. And I do not believe that saving 1% on a budget is worth giving people cancer. I encourage North Adams residents to attend tomorrow, ask questions, and like Williamstown residents, urge the commission to say no. It's time to demand and hold accountability. Do better, North Adams.
Thank you. Uh, this lady over here? Is up first? Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Barbara May, 119 Summit Avenue. I'm here in support of Peter May and his idea for a resolution. And I'm not used to public speaking, so I wrote it down. But my thoughts are that countries run by tyrants, strongmen, and dictators are not places to be admired, and you sure don't want to live there. Our country was founded by people who believed in freedom and human rights. We need to return to that way of thinking, uh, to save our democracy. Uh, we, as our new officers did tonight in front of all of us, when we swear to uphold the constitution, we're supposed to mean it for real. So I think now is a good time to state this, our support for our constitution as a city. Uh, we're already being defunded and threatened for our principles. So it's time for us to stand up. And I support the proposed resolution and urge you to put it on your agenda for the next meeting and then vote to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Greg Mitchell, 67 Summit Avenue. And like some of the others who've already spoke, um, I don't have anything prepared, but I'm in favor of, uh, that resolution. I read that, uh, Dr. May proposed, get on the agenda, the next possible chance. I, I think right now we're watching, uh, this constitution just being ripped to shreds right now by an executive regime that's just decided they can do what they want. And it's scary, and I feel like it's our obligation as a community to speak up and do something about it. Um, if we don't, we're complying in advance, and, um, and I don't like the way that looks. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, uh, have we got anything other, any other subjects? I mean, we've heard about a resolution several times. Anybody else have anything else to say? Please step up to the.
Was there somebody who wanted to speak?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. No, 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 I didn't, couldn't tell where to.
I'm Peter Glazer, 751 Mohawk Trail. I'm also here to support Dr. May's resolution. I think it's important that as many people who believe that it should be supported speak for a unified council statement that is defending the constitution, supporting our precious democracy, and condemning the violations of it on a daily basis that we're all confronting. As was pointed out, three officers, um, took oaths today. And we take those oaths very seriously, as does the city. I wish others did the same. I urge you to put the resolution on the agenda for the next meeting and to support it. It's important that as elective, elected community leaders, you support this resolution, which may be thought symbolic, but is also critical in dangerous and unprecedented times as the swearing-ins tonight demonstrated language matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Eric Wallen, 396 East Main. I, I also want to support Dr. May and his efforts. And, um, I, I can't encourage you enough to stand up and to, um, basically make a public statement by making this vote, um, to encourage the rest of the country to also consider this as a way of resisting what is becoming a very terrifying situation in this country that absolutely must be addressed now, not later. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
No one else wants to speak on any of these things, I don't want it.
I'm Virginia Reel, 36 Holden Street. Um, I, uh, want to speak about the budget. Um, the, I've asked before, so I'll just say again that I would be helpful to understand the grants aspect of funds in the city as part of the budget. Um, the 2030 Plan or other strategic, uh, thinking around the priorities that are implicit in the budget. And then in addition, I really want to encourage a public hearing. I feel that the process that we have is not friendly or open or the kind of environment where somebody can come and learn, ask questions, and engage in dialogue about the budget. Too min- these little too-minute things don't work for that kind of conversation. And so I really, it, my, I want to say, the mayor is an excellent facilitator. I have seen her take on tough crowds more than once, and she's done it well. And she's enabled people to have good, healthy conversations. So I have every confidence that if we had a public hearing, the mayor could make that a productive process. And people would, it would be a chance to get good information out there and accurate information out there. And right now, people are just, have a lot of bad information and rely on Facebook rather than the people who actually hear, who know the actual facts. So I know we've got a very tight process, that's one thing I just want to acknowledge. I looked at the, um, budget timeline last year, and there were 25 days from when the budget was presented until it was approved. There were seven finance committee meetings in those 25 days. And I was at all but one of those. And many of you were at those. That is an intense process, and that is not a process that somebody who's working two, three jobs in our community can come to.
Okay, time is up, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Richard DeSadi, I live at 472 Walnut Street. And I'm here because Peter put out that, uh, request, uh, for you to put that item on the agenda. Um, I see our country's in a constitutional crisis right now. And I think it's up to our citizens to stand up. Our Supreme Court gives rulings, and if they're going to be ignored, and men are put in prisons in foreign countries by mistake but not corrected, it's necessary for us to stand up as another branch of government. There's a division with the Senate and the ju, I mean, the Congress and the executive and the judiciary, but there's also state and local governments. It's another form of the balance of power, so we need to stand up. And if I can digress just a little bit, hearing your discussions, I, I just want to know, there's an item that I've been wanting to put on. an item that I've been wanting to put on the agenda since early May, and it can't seem to find its way to your agenda, but you seem to be talking about it all today. I see it as a crisis in our community. We have a constitution here locally, it's called our city charter. I have the petitions, I'm looking for 50 people to help me get 45 signatures each. We've got to do it by July if you want to get it on this, on this local election, and I'm asking the city councilors and other concerned citizens to run for the city charter so we can demonstrate to the community that a government is established by the will of the people, and we can establish that charter. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patty Lantini from 153 Phelps Ave., and I'm here to support Dr. May's proposal also. I'm not usually one to speak up or anything, but I think our country is in dire straits in that we need to start at the local level is what they sell us to stop this administration. Please support his amendment or resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward. We have one more?
One more. So, of course, I'm delighted to hear about this resolution that they're asking-
Name an address for the record.
I'm sorry, my name is Dune Mackay, I live on Eagle Street here in North Adams, and I always need to be reminded to speak up. So, I would like to speak primarily about water. I thank Councilor Fitch and the mayor for agreeing to have the public informational meeting. July and August is a bit later than we were hoping for, but I understand you're very busy. The Housak Water Quality District meeting tomorrow afternoon here at 4:00 about the possibility of bringing in PFAs with sewage sludge is a very important subject. I would like there to be, have been more public discussion about this. I hope many people will attend and ask questions, because I don't feel I know enough to have a good opinion quite yet. And the topic you probably expect me to speak about is our city watershed and our forest, Notch Forest, and also the Mount Williams reservoir. As you know, there is a plan that has thankfully been squashed that involved logging up there, which brought many of us to be aware of how very, very lucky we are to have a forested watershed, which is the best purification system for drinking water. And there was an open space plan that was released this past January, which, having read it now, I see there is room in there, it doesn't, it, I would like to propose, and I know people I would like to work with, to propose an amendment to that plan, which I understand can happen within the five-year timeframe, that would further protect the forest and improve the hiking trails and public access and public awareness of what a good watershed and recreation area we have up there in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Mayor, would you like to update us on anything?
Sure, just a reminder to everyone that our Memorial Day Parade will be on Monday, May 26. To the City Council, I please invite you to join me in walking in the parade. We will step off from the Legion at 9:30. We will send out more details probably at the end of next week. Ongoing pothole repair, it's an ever-ending project. If anyone out there finds a pothole or has an issue on their street, please call the City Yard at 413-662-3157. I just wanted to update the council as well as the public on some projects that we're working on. I announced, I believe it was like six months ago, that we got a one-stop grant for sidewalk and pavement replacement for Blackington, Porter, Housak, Elmwood, and Montana. That is going to be out to bid very soon, so we will see some construction in that area before hopefully the end of summer. We are also working on a water main replacement on D Street, and we're going to do that in-house at the end of June or July. We had to rebid our CBGY project for Hudson, Jackson, and Herman, but those will be due at the end of next month, so hopefully we will see some construction in those neighborhoods. And then, we are working on a Chapter 90 project that should be out to bid late June for Montgomery, Bliss, South Street, Rich, Rickard, and Ashton Ave. So we will see- ...in the city, plus the Ashland Street Corridor project. So please be patient, we will be sending out announcements- ...in addition to all of that. So look to our Facebook page for more about traffic. Also, in the Assessor's Office, we are working on our cyclical inspections of real property. They are in the process of collecting data. Beginning yesterday, members of Patriot's Properties will be performing this work that will include inspections of your property interior and exterior. They should be calling in advance or identifying themselves. So please, before you let anyone in your house, please make sure they have the correct identification. We know in the past when we've done inspections or put out surveys for data, there have been some scams. So I just want to alert the public that Patriot Properties will be within the city probably from now until May 23rd. If you have any questions about that, please call the Assessor's Office. Also, in addition to that, I'm pleased to share that Assessor Jessica Linkort will be promoted to the role of Treasurer-Tax Collector effective July 1st. Jessica has been with the Assessor's Office since 2019 and served us well as Assessor since 2022. Jessica expressed interest in this role several years ago, and I believe she is exceptionally well-suited for this position. Jessica is a dedicated employee, she's reliable, she's trustworthy, and she's committed to mastering every challenge that she undertakes. So I wanted to inform the council that's one position that we filled, so please join me in congratulating Jessica on a well-earned promotion. And we will be posting the Assessor's Office very soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
The position. Thank you.
Okay, liaison updates, council updates. Councilor Shade.
Yes, thank you. First, I just want to say thank you to everybody who came tonight. It's great to see a lively and active audience. Well, we need your participation more than ever. As was brought up, Finance Committee meetings will be starting soon to go over the city budget. Those meetings are more open and more available for asking questions, so if you are able to attend, you can ask questions at those meetings and usually get answers. So if you are interested in the budget, please look forward. Those meetings will be posted as soon as the mayor has presented her budget to the council, and then we will have those dates and times posted and available. Those meetings are all open to the public, I encourage you all to be there. Also, in regards to Dr. May's resolution, will be on the next agenda, I will be sponsoring it, so I look forward to seeing you then.
Councilor Fitch?
Yes, a couple of things as well. I wanted to bring up, Councilor Bona asked me to do this, but mobile parking options, I am also very curious about getting some sort of a new system going, and I've heard it asked for years since I've been around, and I haven't heard any, 10, okay, since before I was around. I'm just also very curious about that, so I really, I wanted to bring that up again as well. I'm also curious about city charter review. I don't, I don't know what that entails, I'm aware that that's a large undertaking, but I don't know all the different steps that it entails, but I believe the City of Greenfield does it on an automatic basis every 10 years, and it sounds like we haven't done one since 1965, so I just wanted to put that out there as a possibility for us to explore, and I'd gladly chat with you folks after. And then just one more thing too, the, thank you, Michaela and Dune, for bringing up the meeting that's tomorrow, I believe here in City Council Chambers. I'll be here too. I'm just also curious and learning a little more about this, what's going on, and, yeah, and listening and learning. I think that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Council Blackmore?
There's a lot of different formats of how the charter review is done, it depends on how the charter review is written, like Pittsfield has to do theirs every so many years. But ours is based on, you decide on it, you elect people, you do it, and there's a lot of information, I would say, probably with the Secretary of State's office or somewhere on Mass.gov. What I actually wanted to talk about or mention was, steeplecats are back in town starting soon. Last I knew, they were still looking for host families, so check out their website or their Facebook page, there's all kinds of announcements.
Thank you. Councilor Shade?
Yes, I also wanted to bring up, in regards to the city charter, if you don't like some of the things that are happening with MGL, as we saw tonight, I'm not a fan of certain things, the only way to fix that is through a city charter review. So if that's something you're interested in, please pursue it, we need the public to be a part of that process. Also, it's a little early, but June 20th is going to be Pride Night, North Adams, in downtown, it's going to be right in downtown on Main Street this year. I encourage everybody to attend, it's going to be a great, great time, as always.
Thank you. Councilor Bona?
So, just so the council don't think they were left out of anything, the minutes you were provided tonight were three pages of minutes for a 45-minute meeting, which is probably more than you normally get. And there was a paragraph in there on how Shade did want to refer this to the State Attorney General, which we did actually discuss in this meeting. And there was a paragraph in there about the KP law making different decisions on the Airport Commission, so they are in those minutes. These minutes were done, the meeting was done quickly, and the minutes were in within three days, because we know there are people out there that like to file with the state when we have our minutes in late, so these were done quickly and detailed to the recording. So you were not left out anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Breen?
Through the chair, just, you mentioned Porter Street for upgrades. I have a question, I just recently saw where they're talking about putting an art building on the corner there, will we be on pause, or?
No, so the sidewalk will probably be the same, or we will just do one side and then come back.
Okay.
So it's sidewalk improvements for handicap accessibility, as well as some paving in that area.
Yeah, because I just wanted, with their new building, they'll have new curb cuts possibly.
That will all be taken into consideration.
Work together with them.
Certainly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for council concerns? City Clerk updates, do we have any updates? Okay, thank you. Any correspondence? I do have one piece of correspondence from Berkshire Gas, and I will just paraphrase it, I will not read the entire communication.
It's not a delinquent notice, is it?
What's that?
It's not a delinquent.
No, it's not a delinquent notice, no. We have been paying the gas bill, haven't we?
Is it a refund?
Thank you. Okay, so this is from the Department of Public Utilities, Notice of filing public hearings and requests for comments. The, on April 1st, 2025, Berkshire Gas Company filed with the Department of Public Utilities its 2025 climate compliance plan. Berkshire states that it submitted its CCP pursuant to role of gas local distribution companies as the Commonwealth achieves its target 2050 climate goals. And part of that, there will be a public hearing. Let's see, okay, yep, here it is. Department will conduct two public virtual hearings using Zoom video conferencing, one on June 4th, 2025, beginning at 2:00 PM, and the second on June 5th, 2025, beginning at 7:00 PM. The Zoom addresses and the access codes are available in this communication, which was included with your packet, and I believe it is online with the, is it online with the council package?
No.
It is not?
No, that is going to be posted online. We do have it, we have it hanging.
Okay, this was hanging on the bulletin board, but this will be posted online. And we have one more correspondence from Brian Mexick.
Is that regarding the EDU, which is supposed to be on the next agenda?
No, I believe it was on the-
The marijuana.
The marijuana, okay.
Then we are, it's in our, that was in our packet, it was part of that whole thing.
All right, so I'll just make note that it was included in your packet.
Okay.
All right. You need that back, okay, there you go. All right, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So much.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.